States of America and to Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call meeting to order. Thank you all for coming and whoever's in the audience and also at home. As is my typical style, I like to introduce the folks that are around the table. So if you're new to being in the audience or being at home and watching this, we have Christine Keller, our town clerk, John Pachati, councillor, Stephanie Thibodeau, councillor and vice chair, Michelle Floyling, our town manager, Adam Lorette, our newest town councillor, Pierre Lawrence, town councillor, and myself, Matt Townsend, town councillor and chair. So our first order of business, there are the public announcements, which may be found at www.fairfieldme.com. Number one, the summer concerts in Memorial Park will be July 12th through August 30th, on Fridays, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Number two, the Lawrence Public Library comprehensive program details online and via LPL social media. The summer reading program, all ages, challenges for prizes, special activities and events. New this summer, the patron pass to the Coastal Maine Botanical Gardens. Call LPL for details. Children 18 and under, meal collaboration with MSAD 49, lunch 11:30 to 12:00, Monday through Friday, June 17th to August 16th. And finally, number three, non-emergency services will be closed on Thursday, July 4th, in the reserves of Independence Day.
And including July 5th, State of Maine has also shut down, just so folks are aware.
Thank you for that clarification. Interesting. So July 5th as well. Second order of business are the public hearings, to hear public comments on application for special amusement permit renewal for the purposes of music and dancing submitted by River Jack Tavern located at 230 Main Street, Fairfield.
There are no impediments for this renewal.
Thank you, Christine. Anyone wishing to speak?
Anybody on Zoom yet?
Nope.
Dwayne is on Zoom, but he doesn't have his hand raised, so.
Okay. Hearing closed. The third order of business, public comments, a limit of three minutes.
So the proprietor of that organization though did just sign on to Zoom.
Okay.
So you made it by the skin of your teeth. We did just close the public hearing, but there was no comments, so just so you're aware.
But here, sorry, I'm late, there's other issues.
I will mess up our Robert rules, but if you want to go back and hear anything at all.
Can I let everybody know there were no impediments?
Okay. No, that's great. I just, I was here to answer any questions if anybody had some, but it sounds like there weren't any, so.
Nope, I think it's going well. I appreciate everything you do for the town.
We're happy to be here.
Good.
And you know, we haven't done too much music, but we were doing open mic for a couple of months and I'm guessing there weren't any complaints from neighbors about noise, so that's good.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So I'll go back to the public comments. Members of the public may speak to the council or request opportunity to speak on specific items that is on the agenda, or may email comments for council to info@fairfield-me.gov. By 4:00 p.m., day of meeting, submitted content may be read aloud at this time. Any public comments?
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Violet. I was here eight years ago. Stephanie and others might remember, because I want to build a new office. My buildings and office is across from the Purple Cow Restaurant on Acme Drive. I wanted to build a new office and I needed the street abandoned so I could meet setbacks to meet the ordinance. Didn't go anywhere eight years ago. I actually moved my office into a couple bays of car storage, but I still would like to put up some more buildings over there. In order to do buildings, side and rear setbacks, if the street was abandoned, I could put several buildings in there, car storage and others. But in the road for eight years, there's been no maintenance, no plowing, there's no turnaround, grass is growing through the cracks, the ditches have 20-foot trees growing up in them, the road needs to be paved, the manholes and water shut offs are sticking up through the paving, so when I plow it, I have to plow it three inches off the pavement. The bus garage that I developed years ago, I let them come through me, but as you see in the map, 61A that I handed out to you, I'm the, I have 335 feet on that road and I have the only frontage with a building on that road. Kennebec Rental is fenced and ditched and they don't want any access off my road. And the bus garage owns, as you see on that map, 39 feet, which isn't enough to get a bus out, and there's a telephone pole in the middle of their 39 feet of frontage on that road. So I am the only frontage that actually wants to develop and build in there. And again, if you looked at the cost of repaving and reditching that road, which needs to be done, and raising those manholes, and you looked at the cost to hire an appraiser and see what the cost would be to abandon that road, it would be far less cost to the town to abandon that road and let me pave it, let me do the ditch lines, let me develop that property. Again, the road is in terrible condition, there is no turnaround at the end, but if you please drive up and look at the condition of that road and the ditch lines, do notice on my lawns where the trailer trucks drive up there and turn around on my lawns, they've tore all my lawns up, can't keep traffic out of there unless I own it. If I own it, I'll block a lane and say closed, private road, no access. It does say dead end now, but that does not stop 40-foot trailer trucks from turning around on my lawns. They go up, see the railroads closed, back on, back down, back on my lawns, whatever they do. But again, eight years ago, I was here to ask, I would have built a $450,000 office back then, I would have paid $40,000 in taxes over the last eight years on that property, haven't done it because the town didn't want to invest at the time in appraisals and looking at the cost to abandon that road. Michelle gave me paperwork, which I've included in my package from eight years ago, dated 2016, I believe, 17 maybe, and that document clearly explains to the town what the process is, what the procedure is, hire an appraisal, look at the cost effects there, and it does say in that document, there are people that have no cost effects, like Kennebec Rental, they don't have a curb cut, they don't want access off my road, and the bus garage, they have 39 feet, they don't want access, they don't need access there, so the only one that impacts is me, but whatever money the town would spend to abandon that road, I would spend three times that in repaving, reditching, re-draining and continue to fix. I fixed all of the ditch lines and road up around my buildings, I ran sewer lanes up there, I ran storm drain up there, so I have done some infrastructure work, and it's also understood and agreed that if the town abandons that road, it does not abandon the water districts, water lines, the sewer district lines, the utilities still have access and easements to that, to their equipment over there. So again, eight years ago, I asked, I'm back, I'll be back in eight more years to ask if some of you people don't retire, and please look at the cost. The cost may be far less than repaving that road. Paving that road would be $35,000. May far less to abandon that road and let me develop it, let me pave it, let me fix a ditch and drainage, and then I can build some buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions?
I do.
Yes, Stephanie.
On the Davis Road, Davis Street, excuse me, is the street sign still there that says Davis Street?
No, that went from Davis Street to Willow Street to Acme Drive.
And there's no street sign there identifying that road?
There is a street sign that says Acme Drive.
Acme Drive. Are we no longer taking care of that road as a town?
I will have to look into that. I do believe there was some sort of agreement regarding us not plowing that road, but we should be plowing that road and maintaining it because it is a town road.
The first time that I went up there and there was a wheeler truck stuck in my driveway and the guy was shoveling salted sand out so he could get unstuck, it's not an adequate turnaround at the end of that road. That road does not meet the ordinance. Because there's not an adequate turnaround, I asked Bruce, send small trucks or don't plow it and don't sand it, because I've got expensive vehicles up there. I've been plowing it. The bus garage does a little, I do it. Again, the road is so rough, the manholes stick up, you can't hit it with a plow, you gotta plow three inches off the pavement. Bruce, if we asked, I'm sure would send a small truck up to plow it, he'd be bouncing his plows off the same rims that are sticking up that I bounce off, and there's no place to really push the snow per se, up on the lawns maybe. So it's not set up to be plowed by commercial vehicles or a commercial town. It was great when we closed these crossings for the railroad to get that traffic out of there, that was great, but nobody thought about the fact that there's no proper turnaround at the end of this road for commercial vehicles. And again, please go look at my lawns, trailer trucks back in there, drive in there, think they can drive through, back over the lawns. I stopped preparing them until I can shut the traffic down, control the traffic on that road, and do the improvements that really need to be done to that road.
Well, I think for next, our next meeting, it should be a topic for the discussion.
I would.
And can check with Public Works, see what's going on, find out what the agreement was.
Certainly.
And after eight years, I think it's time to revisit.
Sure. Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, does that sound, I mean, Michelle, process wise, what are we looking at?
For a topic of discussion, absolutely.
Yeah, to decide where we're going to go.
Also believe that the, unfortunately, I do believe that the law that's in here from 2016, I think has actually changed, so it'll give us time to put together some more research and stuff for you too.
Yeah, yeah. Needs to be brought to the table.
I think there's some updated stuff that we can get.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll put down the topic for next, next meeting.
And we'll put it towards the top of the list of discussions, so you don't have to sit around for it.
Very good.
You're welcome.
Any more public comments?
Good evening. It's George Hofgren from Nice Corner Drive. I have a question about, this is kind of a general question, and this is not a, I'm not, this is not a complaint or a comment I'm here to make, but according to the website, there's public input being sought now for a hearing coming up on the 10th for a possible acceptance or not of amendments to the land use ordinance specifically for ADUs, which are accessory dwelling units. And so I have my hand in other pots and so I wasn't paying real attention until I did see that on the website, and so I managed to get from, from Code Enforce when I got this packet, which basically just kind of highlights the changes. I don't know, it's somewhat cryptic to me, but so I'm trying to, before this, any sort of, and interestingly enough, we have both Mr. Kenny and Mr. Violet here tonight, so maybe they can speak to it, but I'm wondering, when this topic started, which is back in like 2020 with the ADUs, that was like a movement to bring in additional housing to the state, it's not really evolved since then, so there's been like various amendments and the towns have had votes and some of the towns have been, there's been some pretty, controversial, too strong a word, but dramatic votes, and we seem to be one of the towns, it's like above 10,000 or below 10,000 population seems to be kind of like a determinant on whether or not people want to accept the changes, but I just don't know what the changes are and whether or not we're voting on the entire acceptance of LD 2003, which is the LDU law, or just like specific amendments to us. So I'm just kind of trying, kind of looking for general information.
Michelle is an expert in one of these, but you're much better than most people explaining and understanding, so I'll actually sell that to you.
Did Nicole give you a copy of anything to do with LD 2003?
Uh, maybe not.
But so if she didn't, we can get some information for you, but LD 2003 was passed by the legislature and the municipalities don't have an option. It actually is one of the few laws that's been passed by the legislature in recent years that actually overrides home rule authority, so we had absolutely no choice but to adopt the standards that were within LD 2003, which the municipality did back in December of 2023. We worked in conjunction with KBCOG, we received a $10,000 grant from the state to help fund the amendments to our ordinance, the planning board worked through all their sections and the law. What happened was is we went to send our ordinance changes to the state to prove the work that we had done to justify the $10,000, and realized there was a small section of the law which we had missed. There was a couple of clerical corrections that are going to be done in this change, but there was a section regarding needed language regarding multifamily density bonuses.
Yeah, I saw.
And so that's the only real major correct change that's being done to the ordinance with this round of amendments, but in just some clerical fixes, some words, commas, that kind of stuff.
Okay, because I had, that all makes sense, so, and I should have said that in my question, is this really just more a matter of kind of a bookkeeping or housekeeping? Because it did say that the, with the various revisions, amendments, that July 1st of this year, which would be after the hearing date, was like when the towns had to.
Had to be completed by.
Yeah.
But a lot of municipalities have within their land use ordinance a statement that says that if there is a law that exists that is greater and more restrictive or circumvents the ordinance, you have to follow the law.
Right.
So in most municipalities that have land use ordinances have that statement in there, just as ours did as well. So we were actually the first municipality in the entire region to get this completed. We were the first municipality that KBCOG worked on this with, so we were ahead of the game. A lot of towns are just now getting started on getting this fixed, and folks are aware of that, but they have to comply with the law regardless by the time the deadline rolls around. So this is just a small little fix to them.
That's kind of where my, where my confusion comes from, because that was exactly my understanding when the law was passed and years ago, but then if I, which I did a few weeks ago, went and just did a search on news articles and whatnot, I then see like this, this whole other thing seems to open up, which is other towns like Carrot Tunk or more rural towns voting something down or not accepting something. I don't know what that is. I'm assuming it has nothing to do with these changes.
Yeah, I can't speak to those towns, but for us, we've done our due diligence and hopefully doing the clerical work, so I appreciate the comments and the questions and a chance to have Michelle clarify.
Okay, and I just want to thank, well, recognize Stephanie for, you probably mentioned it if you haven't already, for getting monies for the upgrades to the kitchen and.
Thank you, George.
One small victory for her for her work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Waiting for any, any final comments? Hearing none. We'll go to the fourth order of business, which are reports from staff and committees, so start with the town manager report.
All right. So it's been a while since we've met, so there's a few things here. On June 6th, I was able to meet with a realtor from Surratt Realty who did tour 31 Lawrence Ave, so that the committee could get the comparable market analysis. The price on that building came in at $248,102, which is more than what the appraisal was in 2010, so the committee is working on that, and we'll have more conversation about what the committee is doing as we go forward tonight. The 7th was Sue Jacobs' last day. We did have light refreshments at the town office, so thank you to all those that came in and stopped by to help send her off. Members of the public were there, family, staff, those sorts of things. June 18th, I attended the PFAS committee meeting. June 20th, attended the KRDA General Assembly meeting at the Oakland Fire Station. Glenn Mills, who's the deputy director for the Maine Department of Labor, was there and gave a presentation on economic trends. That was very interesting. The 24th, I attended the 31 Lawrence Ave committee meeting. The 25th, which was yesterday, I spent all day in Solon at the KBCOG Planning Day and their General Assembly meeting. This was a great event. It featured speakers from, and I'm going to try to get these so that it's not an alphabet soup, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Maine Emergency Management Association, the Northern Border Regional Commission, the Department of Economic Community Development from the state, Maine Municipal Association, and Somerset County's Emergency Management Agency. So I did leave with information on several new grant opportunities, plus I was able to speak with the municipal policy associate from Farmland Trust, they were there as a sponsor, which might be a great invite to our PFAS committee meetings, and had a really great conversation with some potential funding sources through the USDA, so that was, it was a great meeting. And then today, I was in Bingham at Somerset Economic Development Corporation's meeting, lots of updates on the power corridor and their build out of broadband throughout Somerset County. Their facility is up and running in Bingham, that's where we were, which was at the old school, which is where they are hosting classroom space, office space, for a lot of the tech stuff that they talked about when they came and did their presentation. Overall, in their program, throughout all of the various libraries and partnerships that they have had with their broadband initiative, they have done somewhere in the neighborhood of about 350 people that they've provided training to, so it's, it's a great program and that's going to keep going forward. And then, so for project updates, as we were talking about earlier and that George alluded to, the Community Action Grant that was applied for, for the community center was approved. We did find out last Wednesday, the day of your last council meeting, however, we were asked to keep that quiet until it went out to our legislative delegations. That has since happened, so now we can talk about that publicly. We did request and receive $45,272 for kitchen appliance replacement, water efficient toilets and urinals, low-flow showerheads, water bottle filling stations to replace the fountains. In conjunction with these upgrades, we'll be hosting several educational series regarding personal resiliency, such as home efficiency for home energy pieces, storm and evacuation preparedness, various different things. We have to host at least four of those, and I think we have ideas for about five or six, so that's good. And then just so the council is aware, the Police Department Union MOU and the Fire Department Union contract have all been signed and received by all parties well in advance of the new fiscal year.
That's a very, yes, busy.
All good things, but busy.
Very good. A lot of good stuff. Stephanie?
And I did want to add on to that, we are getting new appliances for the kitchen. I don't think you said that.
That?
For kitchen appliance replacement?
Yeah, you did. You said it very quickly. It was a lot of stuff to get through, it was a whole page.
Any updates for the community center too, or just the retrofit for the bathrooms and the kitchen?
Just the bathrooms and the kitchen.
Okay.
And the new water fountains.
And the new water fountains. Yeah.
Any other questions from Michelle? Thank you, Michelle. The town clerk election report.
So for the June 11th state primary and MSAD 49 school board and school budget validation referendum, the current number of registered voters for June 11th was 4,543. Total number of voters casting ballots for the state was 481, municipal 507 voters. The turnout percent for state was 10.58%, municipal 11.16%. Absentees, requests that were facilitated, state 94, municipal 100. Absentee ballots accepted and cast, 886, municipal 92. Absentees rejected, there were eight that didn't come back, two Uwakava uniforms and overseas voters through the State of Maine. We had one new voter that registered that day and we had one change to one voter, one spoiled ballot. Noteworthy for this election, the voter turnout, of course, was exceptionally low, it was rather obvious, steady but low. There were many clarifications provided regarding the new semi-open primaries for our voters throughout the day, and we had candidates and petitioners present in full compliance with all the state requirements, which was fantastic. And we had an interesting honor, so our oversight agency, the Maine Secretary of State's office reached out the day before the election, and Secretary of State Shenabellows, she honored us with a tour. She requested a tour, not an inspection, but a tour, and she and her associates came with treats and they got to tour the polling place, they stopped and talked to all of the polling personnel, and I just wanted to say that Team Fairfield considers the visit and the tour an exceptional distinction. They admired our compliant layout and they were very gregarious, and they thanked all of our personnel for their dedicated service, and I for one appreciate the Secretary of State's steadfast support and the evolving resources that protect our personnel and enable us to continue preservation of the integrity of the election process. And moving on, in addition to every town department that contributes assistance during elections, election personnel are consummate professionals. I'd like to just say, well done by all, and we take pride in maintaining the integrity and compliance of elections, and it continues to be an honor to administrate elections for the town of Fairfield and lead our team in facilitating yet another accomplishment.
Congratulations, Christine. Thanks for the discussion and the report, but yes, I want to thank you for, you and your team's hard work. It definitely comes off professionally, and I think you definitely maintain the integrity. I'm glad that Secretary Bellows recognized that, so I appreciate it. I think the town's lucky to have you, so I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And I'll pass that along to everyone else.
Good. There are three other committee reports. Building is probably still on.
We're just waiting for the fire department from drilling and what the council recommendations, that's it, we'll all stand by.
Very good. On June 18th, we had the PFAS committee meeting, and so we actually had one of our members do a presentation for us about the different viewpoints on the PFAS issue and the origins of it and the severity and degree of it in this, in this area. So I think it's always an important part of the committee that we look at different viewpoints and that we look at all sides of the issue, which is important for us to go forward. It also provided us some questions, some thoughts that we have for our next meeting with the CDC, which will be, I think, very helpful for us. I think we are making, there were some, some good ideas, some good thoughts, I think we're kind of starting to coalesce a plan coming forward, but I think the CDC meeting will be really important for us. A couple of members are, actually John's on the committee, and then George and Max, Kenny, who's in the audience, were there, and so I'm not sure if any of you have anything to add to that, but I think it's a diverse committee and that we get a chance to talk about different ideas, so I'm pretty impressed. Thoughts?
I just know that the letter, we have not received or the policy letter.
Yes, so thank you for pointing out, so Max just pointed out that we have not had a response to our letter to the, to the state, so hopefully we are waiting for that during the summertime. I suspect it will take a while, but we're still, still working on that. I think it was, and with some of the issues that have come out, I think it was worthwhile to send that, so. Thank you, Max.
Economic Committee?
Economic Committee, we'll jump in.
The Economic Committee is not meeting in July because of the holiday. We will meet August 6th at 3:30 in this room, and I'd like to remind our citizens that June is Love Maine Trails Month, and we are offering Love Fairfield's Trails with QR codes at the four trails of Mill Island Park, Cattail Trail, Goodwill Hinkley, and the KBCC Western Avenue Trail, and if you do all four trails and take a shot of that QR code, you're entered into a contest where you could be the lucky recipient of a $100 gift certificate to New Balance. So, and for the grant that Michelle has spoken about, there is a little caveat in there, and part of that is that we, this is a climate resiliency grant that we have procured, and as a result, we are going to be having some informational meetings here in the community center, and I hope that people will keep their eyes and ears open for those and attend these, because it is important in the long run that we prepare ourselves for what Mother Nature is going to give us for weather, so, thank you.
Stephanie, thank you. Time frame on the trails.
The trails, it's a month of June, the whole month of June.
So get your four QR codes in by the end of the month.
End of this week, yeah.
Yeah.
Four more days.
Exactly, so, trail a day, a trail a day, you gotta.
Yeah, trail a day.
And so a question may come out, I'm not sure if you can help me on this, Stephanie, or it might be something from Michelle. So there was, we had talk about a federal grant as well for the community center. I'm not sure where that rolls in or where that stands, or if it's okay time to just ask, as we mentioned that, so.
Is it an okay time to talk about this or give?
No.
No.
No, okay.
All right.
So still waiting, still waiting on.
Still waiting on word for it to be an okay time to talk about that.
Good, that'd be nice. So, and the last one we'll have is basically the Good House, or the 31 Lawrence Avenue House. We, so we met on June 24th, actually we discussed the fair appraisal of the, of the building, and so the next steps are really to talk to the librarian and get her feel moving forward and establishing a group to look at funding for potential building, whether it's an addition or using that building. So I think we're still looking at our, our options, and they are, just like we talked about at the beginning, which are to tear down, to actually try to move, which is probably very difficult in talking to the real estate agent, moving that building is probably not going to happen, and/or actually renovating that building and turning it actually as the annex for the library and connecting that in. And the last one is to turn around and sell it, which, to be honest, is, I guess you should wait till the committee is done, but to be honest, the committee's last option, I think, is to sell it for private development, not only because it's then locked in, something we can't control as a town, next to the library, next to the park, forever. can't control as a town, next to the library, next to the park forever. So I think in our perfect world, we will find out a way to maybe make it an annex for the library, but we'll see. We're actually happier with it than we thought when we went into it. I think there's a lot of agreement among the committee that it has decent bones and that it has, it's an option for us, and so, and could be a cost savings for the town long term.
Yeah, that was the original point to do that in the first place, so that's why we did it with the library stuff.
Yeah, so it's still really hinges upon what the library wants, because we want to make sure that we take care of the library, and that's what this is all for. But I think it's also a part of the town for the next, long after I'm gone, so I think that's really important. I think that's where I stand on the committee reports, so I guess, and if they have any questions about that, I'm happy to try to answer I can. Hearing done, we'll move along to the fifth order business, the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or standard business and therefore will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests prior to the consideration of this portion of the agenda, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered next on the agenda. These items include: Item 24-97, or the Fairfield Town Council hereby waives the reading of and accepts a minutes for meeting number 2024-11 held on June 5, 2024. Item 24-98, order the Town Council hereby approve treasurer's warrant number 128, general fund, in the amount of $413,182.48, not limited to, but including Harrison Strader, Yankee Communications, motor vehicles, and Quark Ford. Item 24-99, order the Town Council hereby approve and sign the sewer certificate of commitment in the amount of $156,171.75 for the fourth quarter fiscal year for sewer billing for the period of 4/1/24 to 6/30/2024.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero, thank you. The sixth order business, take action on the following items of business as read by the council chair. Item 24-100, order the Town Council hereby approve special amusement permit renewal for the purposes of music and dancing submitted by River Jack Tavern located on 230 Main Street in Fairfield.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
I just have a question out of curiosity, Kent.
Yeah.
I noticed the yellow ropes. Is that to facilitate parking, or are you planning on utilizing more green space?
I'm planning on some cornhole tournaments this summer.
Oh.
But that, you know, as long as it's roped off well and it has a good walkway, it's included in my liquor license, so, you know, hoping to have cornhole boards out there on, you know, nice weather weekends throughout the summer and hoping to do a couple of tournaments, as long as I can get all my ducks in a row and figure it out.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious.
And I am having, hopefully, as long as Bi-Guy gets here soon, I am adding the parking lot restrikt to make it look a little nicer and facilitate parking better.
Okay, good. Thank you for doing what you're doing.
Happy to do it. Happy to be here. We love this community.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 24-101, order the Town Council hereby authorizes use of contingency funds as may be necessary as of June 30, 2024, to cover expenditures that make seen annual budgeted amounts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Michelle, are we going in the red in any area?
No, we're not anticipating the fact that we're going to need them at all for anything. In fact, you would have received this evening an updated expense summary, revenue summary.
Yes.
You'll see that all of our departments, none of them, the closest one to being 100% spent is protection, which is your hydrants and streetlight account.
Okay.
Right, so everybody else is well under that. Not having staff throughout the course of the year is the biggest reason for all of that, and some of our various different departments, but no, there's nothing that we're anticipating. This gets put on every year as a standard item, but we're not anticipating a need for anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the description, Michelle. I was just going to say, usually we have this every year just to make sure we cover our bases, so.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Five zero. Item 24-102, order the Town Council hereby considers extending appointments to the ad hoc committee to address the ramifications of PFAS contamination for a one-year term to expire June 30, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? I would like to just say that we are moving along. It has been tough to get the state departments to attend meetings. They have been gracious to eventually attend, but it's been a slow process, and I do understand that they're busy, but that has kind of held us back, but I think we have made a lot of ground, covered a lot of ground, and I would suspect that we are going to be finishing this up well before our year extension, but I think it would be well worth it for the town to continue this committee as we have been, I think, a very unbiased committee and asking a lot of good questions and hopefully seeking a lot of good plans for the town to move forward. That's my pitch, so I appreciate your vote that we can extend. Any more questions for me or discussion? All those in favor? Five zero, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Which goes to the next one. 24-103, order the Town Council hereby considers extending appointments for the ad hoc committee to explore future use of the Good House, 31 Lawrence Avenue.
So moved.
Second. So I will say on this one, we don't have a time period on this, at least on this item number. We discussed in our committee meeting, there'd be probably no, probably 90 days, maybe 120, but we really are coming close to wrapping this up, to come up with recommendations for the council, so I would foresee it really being no more than 90 days.
The committee would have probably been done by their June 30 deadline if it wasn't for the fact that it took so long for us to find a realtor to actually get in the house and give us that information. They really needed that information as part of their process before they could go forward, so the conversation at the last meeting, as Chairman Townsend had stated, was that they thought they could actually get it done in less than 90 days, but 90 to call good, so.
So, do we need to amend it to show 90?
Yes.
Yes.
We need a friendly amendment to extend it for July, August, September 30th. So 30, 30 days in September?
Yeah.
I don't know. I was absent that day. They taught that.
Three days in September, April, June, and November. Oh, and I said 30, I'm sorry.
September 30th.
Okay.
So, you made the motion.
Yeah.
Do you want to make that amendment?
Let him break the ice and make a favor.
Well, it's a friendly amendment to a motion.
Friendly amendment to an existing motion, so it should be done by those that mean it.
Make your motion, extend it to, and the September 30th.
And the, second.
I second it.
Awesome. So, the friendly amendment of extending, all those in favor? Thank you. Five zero. Item 24-104, order the Town Council hereby considers the purchase of the synthetic ice rink from the Central Maine Youth Hockey League.
So moved.
Second.
So, discussion?
I know we had some money donated for that. Is all the money, I know one sponsor wants the money back. Is there any others, or is it, we still have the other two?
We still have the $5,000 from Hudamaki and the $1,100 from the BFW, but the $5,000 to Sapi was returned.
Okay.
As of today, the balance in the fund is $29,133.79.
How much should, what does it, will it cost to purchase it?
The first option was for $30,000.
Okay.
But in this agreement, it is saying $59,460.
It's for, for insurance.
That's the replacement value for insurance purposes. That wasn't the purchase.
So the purchase is still $30,000.
Purchase was $30,000.
And we do not have the money in our account to cover for this. I would like to see us not purchase this. I'd rather see us do something that has more longstanding value for the community and not have to go into a different account to pay for it at this time. That's my feeling.
Where's the, just one right now, Michelle?
In a very safe place. It's behind Public Works.
Okay.
You mentioned we have $29,000 or so in that account. Is that, taking into consideration those two donations in the amount?
Yes, that includes those two donations. So, so what we had agreed to do when all of the organizations were contacted after we realized we were going to be able to get it for this winter for free and not have to actually pay for it at that time, we agreed to reach back out to those organizations depending on what the council's decision was, and then they'll determine what they want to do with those funds going forward.
And over the winter, the skating rink wasn't even used as often as I would have liked to have seen it being used. I know, Adam, you took care of some of the needs with ice skates, and there were some other people, but it really was underutilized. I just think that we can do a better job providing ice skating for our community. It needs more thought. Needs more thought.
I think that's reasonable. I think you can make, on the other hand, you can make a point that it was not put in place till late in the year, so it kind of lost that winter appeal, or if it had been open in December. But, you know, the use was, I think, less than anticipated.
Right, and I'm not sure it was always cleared off after a storm either, and we need to have that volunteerism in order to ensure that it will be utilized, and if that's not happening, then I don't think we're ready for it.
We were fortunate early on not to have much in the way of storms.
Then also too, for you persons, that we need the volunteers to install it and take it down. As one member or there to install it, it beat me up, so.
So it's labor intensive.
For what, three or four people?
Yeah, there's only three or four. I will say Public Works was on it, taking it down. They, I got there within an hour and a half, and they'd already put it away. I was willing to come down and help, and Bruce sent them out early, so.
Yeah, and there's some, I'll come back and say that, to some degree, on the install, there was lack of coordination as we had set up a time for it being 1 o'clock, and then all of a sudden, a number of people tried to show up at 10 o'clock, so it beat some of the volunteers to the punch, and whether that was, it is what it is. But, but yes, we need to have a better volunteer corps. I can make a case that, you know, it's something that would grow, and you have, you plant a seed one year. If it doesn't grow well, you don't necessarily kill it, but, but I think there are other opportunities and other options. I am happy that we did what we did, because we didn't spend any town money. We took an option to see what the interest would be. It isn't where we thought it would be, and I think it's a chance to pivot and do something differently.
Yeah, I agree.
Any more discussion? So, all those in favor of purchasing the synthetic ice rink? Seeing none, all those again opposed?
Abstaining.
So, did you vote no?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And you're abstaining?
Yep. So, moving on to the next one. 24-105, order the Town Council hereby confirms the town manager appointment of Kristi L. Pollan as firefighter EMT effective June 17, 2024.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion.
I'd like to welcome her, and as Chief Larry said, to the team.
I would second that.
She comes to us from Skowhegan Fire, so, yep, we're down to one. We have one opening left, so that's wonderful.
All those in favor? Five zero, thank you. Order the town, item 24-106, order the Town Council hereby elects the town manager to serve on the MMA's Legislative Policy Commission, Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Have you been on this committee before, Michelle?
I have. This will be my second and a half round.
Okay.
I, Peter had been on it, and then when he didn't get reelected, I filled his slot, and then I was elected the last two, it's a two-year term, so I was elected for the last two terms, and then this is the next one.
Because it's very detailed and intense, right, Michelle?
It is.
It is.
It is.
Very educational.
Especially this last legislative round, where there was more than 2,000 bills that came out. It was just, it was crazy.
Just a couple.
Just a couple.
All those in favor? Five zero, thank you. So moving on to the seventh order business, the council workshop and other business. Number one is proposed was to discuss parks and recreation departments. Go ahead, I'd be happy to hear. Discussion.
I've got discussion.
All right.
With?
Lead on.
Go ahead, Stephanie, first.
First of all, people need to know that the establishment of a Parks and Recreation Department is mentioned in the comprehensive plan. It's actually part of it. The question is, and Michelle did a really nice job putting together a packet of information, and just so that the public knows, if you go on our website and you see our page, it actually says Parks and Rec, and it talks about the parks, and it talks about the trails, and I'm trying to find it, and I ran it off. There it is. So you have sports facilities, which would be the PAL athletic fields. You have parks and playgrounds, and that would involve Mill Island Park, the community center playground out here, Veterans Memorial Park, or Monument Park. We're not really sure what the correct name of the park is, and the youth fishing pond. For trails, I've mentioned those before. We have Kennebec-Mesulon ski trail system trails. We have ATV trails, snowmobile trails. The Central Maine Trails map is included in that. We have river access, which would include the boat ramp out here off from Water Street. We have the portage at Shawmut Dam, and we have the Hinkley Boat Landing. In the works, of course, is the Mill Island Park redevelopment plan, but we also are seeking playground expansion as well, for both out here possibly, an upgrade, and at Mill Island Park. So that's what you find on our website. So Michelle went through and talked, listed our assets here for Parks and Recreation, and it should be noted that we would still work as, with PAL as an alliance and not take over PAL. That's not the intent of a Parks and Recreation Department, but it still needs to be talked about. And the more I read, what Michelle put together, the more questions I had, and the more dollar figures I'm seeing, and it really made me very concerned as to how big we want to go with Parks and Rec. We could do just a recreation department, or we could do Parks and Rec. Right now, Public Works takes care of the parks. Do we still want that to happen? The other questions I had were, what's, what would be the mission of a Parks and Rec Department? What is the vision of it? Years ago, you could have a Parks and Rec Department be whatever you wanted it to be, but I've been doing some research, and in my research, I'm finding out that that is, really, it could still work, but nowadays, everything has to go that extra mile. And so with that extra mile, how much of this do you want the community to be involved with? Does, do you want it to transform our community? Right now, we have, and I've talked about this before, we have no brand in Fairfield. What we do have is a very strong athletic community with the Lawrence High School Sports and with PAL, and do we want to continue that? And that is, that to me would be an opportunity if we did go with a Parks and Rec Department. Will it increase the quality of services that we can offer people here in town and probably get more people to come to our town? I think that would be another strong asset. Could we offer more programs for the community? I mean, we've had so many things over the past years, people wanting to do things for our community, but it's all done on a volunteer basis, and it's so very hit and miss that you need to have somebody there that is the coordinating figure of it, and I am speaking from experience with Fairfield Days. So, we need to have a discussion on this. I don't think it's something that we need to go in very lightly. I would like to see a Google survey done and ask our citizens and surrounding neighbors what they would think of a Parks and Rec Department. What would they think of just a Rec Department? Right now, Public Works maintains the fields. I think, why upset the apple cart? That's one of my feelings. And... And who's going to do this? And is this something for the Economic and Community Development Committee? We already are working on several plans, long-term plans, and I don't know where we want, if this is something that should be considered community development. But overall, I think it's a conversation that needs to take place. It's long overdue. We're very, I think this is a beacon of light for us if we pursue this, and it will help tie, tie the community together, just being with the Rec Department alone, so.
And looking at the rough budget mock-up to, you know, at a cost of doing this whole thing would be more than a half a million dollars, which would be a considerable jump on the budget.
Would you be able to offset some of that from Public Works? I mean, if your accounting's saying there's, like, park maintenance is being done by Public Works, it's already been done by Public Works, so it's a shift.
On the back page.
So the draft, the concept information that I provided to you did not include anything that we currently budget for. We didn't drill down into it that far. It was really just a matter of get you started, get you thinking about it, and then, yes. So, and so the folks at home do know that, like, the preliminary estimate came in at just over $500,000 for the department, but there was staff that would be pulled from other places. There's gas expenses that are in other departments already. There are things that we are, pieces that we already budgeted for that would come in. Quite frankly, the biggest expense out of the whole thing, other than what we already have, is personnel.
Yep.
Because if you bring in addition, for every new person that you hire, especially if you are looking for a Parks and Recreation Director, and if it's a full-time Parks and Recreation Director, you're looking at about $100,000 to cover wages and benefits.
Can we just go look at other towns, just see what they're doing? Because I know Clinton has an association.
They do, and they're made up of volunteers, but I did provide to you in your packet the budgets for the town of Hampton and the town of Skowhegan, and what their budgets look like year over year. There was quite a bit of information available for both of those.
Now, I really like the Hampton Rec one. It's not Parks and Rec, it's just Rec, right down to their mission, their vision, their guiding principles. I mean, to me, this is what Fairfield needs. So if you have a chance to look at that. And again, if it's just a Rec Department, I think that would cut down on staffing that would be needed, but I think, again, it would need to be discussed.
And you can look at, I mean, these were just some that I picked up based upon population size that was similar from the MMA survey that I provided to you from last year's salary survey, and I pulled a couple from their website, but there's, I mean, and you can tell just by the three that I gave you, Parks and Rec Departments are made up of a hodgepodge of different things, all over the entire state. So you can make it whatever you want to make it, it's just, you need to figure out what you want to do. So there's a lot more, like, a lot more work that could be done with the budget piece and all of that, once you kind of have a better framework and vision, so.
I think potentially it does give us an opportunity to knit together some of our resources between the river, some of the open country that we have, some of the trails. And I also like the fact that we can also provide recreation or opportunities for more than just elementary-age kids. So I think we start looking at everything from high school, junior high, potentially through senior citizens being involved in the.
Not intentionally, but before seniors.
Yeah, exactly. So I think that's a really important part, that you involve everyone in the town.
Yeah.
And you get more, you get more buy-in, and you get more volunteerism, and I think you better get, you know, this helps whole community, you know, activity. So I think it's.
Yeah, you're talking a lot about recreational, you gotta talk about two, also two events for the town.
Right.
Try to entice people to come here, and actually something for residents to look for.
Right. I just think it's a great way to tie our community together, and Fort Fairfield is another town in Maine that has a Rec Department, and I was reading about that online, and, you know, it's about our size. Again, relying on volunteerism, and who knows what will happen with a future skate rink if we have a Parks and Rec Department or a Rec Department. But again, we have to have some discussion and see where we want to go, so.
So we can easily put a survey together and ask some questions and get that out there. Do you want me to draft a survey and bring it back for your next meeting, or just put one together and put it out?
So you?
My opinion is, actually, I trust you to draft one and put one out, and that will help, you know, keep the process moving, instead of waiting until the next meeting going, oh, that looks like a good survey, and then now put it out.
And then it's a month later?
Yeah.
Can I double-check it, though?
You can double-check it before I send it out. I'm gonna actually get the growth council to help me do it, actually.
All right.
We're putting in the work.
That's just, that's just my, my two cents, which is worth just that two cents.
Is it okay with all of you if I double-check it?
Please.
Yes, ma'am. It's teaching Stephanie.
So, Peter, you mentioned events, and I know we had just gotten done talking about like, the rink, for example, where we had the lack of coordination, and this is something that would really help in that area. Something that I was looking at, Michelle, in this packet, you've included a few revenue, budgeted revenues, like Town of Hampton and everything. It looks like there is opportunity there to offset the tax liability for the town by also using some of those events to drive future revenue and offset it quite a bit.
There is. We'd have to drill down as to exactly where their revenue comes from, so like, you'll notice, it could be the charge for swim lessons, it's the charge for people going to their camps, it's usually the charge for kids in sports programs. Those would be revenue streams that we would not collect, because that would stay with PAL, but there could be things that could be done. So if you have someone who's coordinating event, say here at the community center, there's nothing saying that there isn't, you know, a small cover charge to go to that event, so therefore it generates the revenue to cover its costs. So there's always options that you would be able to do that.
Yeah, I'd certainly be interested in doing a survey and also hearing some from PAL about maybe a potential opportunity to.
How that dovetail in, yeah. So what does that look like to you folks at this point? I want to start the survey timeframe-wise, I mean, we want to make sure we stay on this and circle back around. But so we want to put it on for, not the next meeting, maybe the meeting after, or what's our?
I think by the end of September, that survey should be completed. We have information.
And I think you should go sooner than that. If you wait that long, people will think, oh, I can fill it out later. Oh, I can fill it out later. And then they don't go back and fill it out.
Should have it for, like, the month of July and report back to August.
And we'll be able to have it report back to your August meeting.
Okay.
You have one meeting in August, so, oh, we can do your August meeting.
Yeah, okay, do it in August, then.
Do we have one meeting in August?
Well, you normally do, and what happened is in January, you opted to schedule two and go opposite of where we normally.
Oh, that's what we did. So we do have a budget for August meeting, it'll be fine.
Yeah, you've got a workshop talk coming up to discuss August, so just say August.
Just do August.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Breaken?
All right.
Any more thoughts about that? I think it's, I think it's, it's been percolating for the last few years.
It has.
And so I think it's, I think it's good to talk about it, and I think it's, you know, when you talk about the whole subject, it isn't, like, you look at this expense, but I think we are ways to offset it, and I think you look also look at the potential value for it, but I think it's, we need to talk about it.
Yeah. And we do need a mission. If we're going to have it, what would be our mission? And what would be the vision of this? And so I think our next discussion should be more, do we want Parks and Rec, or do we just want a Rec?
Do we need to bring something up to the table in August, when we hear back from the survey, have each one of us councils to have?
I think we need to see, first of all, if the community's going to stand behind it, because it'd be a lot of work for nothing if it doesn't pass. It has to go to a referendum vote. Hopefully, that wouldn't be nice if we could do it for November, and just as, no, no. No, it would not. No. You don't, you don't have time. Oh, we don't have time. Because you'd have to decide that at the next meeting. Yeah, next June, then.
Not just that, but you would require to be part of the tax commitment, so.
Oh, yes, that's true.
So you have a year to work on it. You have time.
We have time, all right.
Well, less than a year, but.
Well, let's not wait.
You have less than a year.
Exactly.
But I think for our next discussion, it should be about Parks and Rec versus Recs. And, you know, and that would be something for the survey to ask, too, if people would like to have just a Rec Department or a Parks and Rec.
Just like a pros and cons.
So you'd have, we'd have six months, quite frankly. By the time we have to put the budgets together.
And get our ducks all lined up in a row. Yeah.
Definitely.
Okay.
Nice, good discussion. The second item on the other workshop item was to discuss assessment adjustments to real estate and personal property values. So Michelle can probably speak to that.
We still don't have a number for you yet, but I can tell you, what they are doing is they're currently working on what the factor is. There will be a factor that will be applied to all of our tax table assessments with the goal to ensure that our municipality is at 70% of assessment for when we do the tax commitment. They are still working on that. They've had several revals in some other communities that have taken some time, but they're, they're getting towards that number. I just don't know what that is. I should know within the next 30 days what that number's going to be. So ultimately, what is going on, because of the fact that our municipality is at 59%, 58% of assessment, even with the 10% rule, that still puts us below 70. So they're gonna do an adjustment. It'll affect everybody the same across the board, doesn't matter how big or how small your house is, how much land you have, so it'll take, you know, that first acre will be now X. And quite frankly, it will be helpful in the long run, because it won't be such a shock and awe effect, and we may have to continue to do this until a revale is committed, completed, so that we don't go from 58% of assessment to 100% of assessment, because that basically means most folks' property values will double in one year, and that's, that will be a hit. So hopefully, I mean, nobody likes to know that their taxes are, we don't know what the mill rate's gonna be, so we're not gonna say people's taxes are going to go up, or property values are gonna go up.
Just adjust the mill rate to keep everything the same.
Well, it's relative. We still have to raise the same amount of money, whether we're at 59% of assessment or we're at 70% of assessment, same amount of money.
So you're just gonna adjust the mill rate and keep it.
So unless the next adjustment will let it be going out to all the residents for the tax map, or is it?
No.
No? Okay.
That's not what we were planning.
Right.
No.
Is that something you'd like to see?
And that's, because it's typically not something that we do, it's not an expense that we budget for.
Because I know a lot of residents don't know what's next, the tax maps happening, because I went into town office, I picked a map, I know which one it is, but a lot of residents don't know which tax map, statin and WAN and things like that.
Oh, you mean for the, for the revale process?
Right, yeah.
So we have that posted, we have it posted on our website, we have it posted in a couple places around town, we also have it on our Facebook page, we talk about it every chance we can get. But what we can do is, there probably will be an informational piece that will go as an insert in the tax bills anyway, to let them know that this is why your property values have changed, and if you want to talk to the assessor, and I can see about getting that included in with that.
Yeah, and there's, it's kind of tough right now, too, because there is starting to be another adjustment on real estate values.
All right. So the third, any more discussion on that item? All right. Discuss the Parks Rental Agreement and Permit for Use. So this came out from a few questions, I believe, publicly. Michelle, you can probably speak to it.
So Councilor Loret asked, his very first action asked to be on the agenda, about us to discuss this form. So we did a little bit of research on it for him. It has been in effect since April of 2010. We did find where some adjustments were made with the town council. I believe this came up because someone was interested in renting Memorial Park for more than an hour and a half for an event, and we currently don't have a process that allows that. Now, that being said, our parks are public places. When we do this form, this rental agreement and permit for use, it's listed for the gazebo or Mill Island Park. Mill Island Park typically so that there's not more than one birthday party happening on the playground at the same time, and the gazebo so that there's not more than one wedding booked at the same time. There's no fees, there's no, none of that involved, it's literally just to make sure that brides and grooms don't show up at the same exact time to get married.
Is there any chance, Michelle, to put a buffer from the person who rented it the first time, for the one, the hour, hour and a half, the next person comes in, can it have a buffer, so there won't be a car crash, for the rush of picking up trash and things like that, and the next one?
If that's a rule that the council wants to create, we certainly can make that happen.
I wrote something down, is there will be an hour scheduled between events for cleanup plus maintenance, and for the other event can set up. I don't know if that would be something for the council, or things like that.
It hasn't been an issue for us in the last, well, at least in the last eight years that I've been here, but, or 14 since the form's been done, but certainly if that's what the council chooses to do, you can.
Do you have any numbers on how many rentals or permits are going out, in terms of, is this something we need to limit at an hour and a half? Because to your point, it creates some confusion, because you just mentioned it's public space, so people could just go and do it. If I read this agreement, though, I feel like, no, I can't. So there was some confusion with a resident who wanted to have an event at the park, and I think what you just mentioned, too, is that's more so just for the gazebo portion of the park, which isn't, isn't even what was being used or asked about. They had called into the town office and were given the information that they felt was correct. And so, first question, do you have any data on how many of these are even being done?
I don't off the top of my head, but I can get that. I don't think it's a large number. I do know that the gazebo's used obviously more in the summer and fall than it is in others, but I don't think it's a lot.
Right. Well, one of the things with, with Peter, with that hour aspect, too, because part of the agreement is, is that you're responsible to clean up after yourself, bring all garbage with you when you leave, and Public Works is called to clean.
Give some chance, too.
So it gives them a chance to do it without somebody coming sitting right on top of them. I agree.
Yeah, I like that idea, too, of a buffer. I do question the hour and a half, though, as being long enough, and so I would like to see it say, this permit allows for one event up to two hours, which would include setup and cleanup, and I even toyed with maybe three or four hours, especially if you're having, you know, like a barbecue down at Mill Island Park with some people. An hour and a half, you can't play a bocce game very well.
They won't feel rushed, either.
Yeah.
The cleanup says, oh, I need to stop early, because my hour and a half is, is all set.
Right. I think, I think we're confusing what this means. All this document says is that we won't, we're not gonna let somebody else reserve the space at the same exact time. We don't restrict anybody from going to the park, even if you've reserved the space. So if somebody wants to take their dog for a walk through Monument Park while you're getting married, we don't prevent that from happening. We don't publicize that the park has been reserved. If you want to play a bocce game at Mill Island Park, you don't have to reserve it for an hour and a half, go play a bocce game at Mill Island Park. You don't need to do it for that. This was, we had, Mill Island Park had a playground, and it had covered picnic tables, it had the hibachi grills that were all there. A lot of that stuff's not there anymore, other than a couple of swings, and I think one hibachi grill might be left, maybe? And one or two picnic tables, because we've taken a new one over there? It's not, it doesn't stop anybody else from using the park, it doesn't even stop you from staying longer. It just puts it on record so that somebody knows that somebody's already in there. And I can only assume it stemmed from two different sets of people looking to get married in a particular location at the same exact time. And it just helps people prevent that from happening to them, because we're not there to say they got here first. The wording in this is not saying that.
Correct.
And it needs to change. So.
I'm glad the confusion is not just with our residents, because it's clearly at these tables, too, because this is easy.
So I think, I did make some suggestions, and I will be more than happy to give these to you, Michelle, concerning how the layout of this page should take place. Sure, I'd love to have them. We can look at revising this form for you when we get it back to you. But I mean, it does. it back to you. But I mean, it does state, the parks are open to the public from dusk to dawn. You may have a function in the park anytime from dawn to dusk.
But it is embedded in a paragraph that is the second one with two asterisks.
And it's kind of contradictory in the same paragraph, though, too, which creates some confusion, like then tells you, it's not meant for private parties.
And we also need to know where people can get their insurance, if they so want to get insured.
Yes, we do have to put that in there. That is not here.
And I know that's through MMA, one opportunity there. But I'll give you this, because it's got my thoughts on what it should look like.
Perfect. We can work that out.
Okay.
Had an information?
Quick idea, because I went digging through all of this and spent a few hours going through 14 years of history. The Parks and Use Ordinance has language that has recently been updated by the police department to not just include smoking and alcohol, but it also includes cannabis or marijuana products, as well as vaping. That is prohibited, and that probably should be included in it.
And on that same note is the noise, because.
That requires a special sound permit.
Yes. Yep. Definitely. We can get it redone.
Can't bring in my band?
Not right now. Not without a permit. Had a good 14-hour run. I don't know what happened, is, there we go.
It is one of those items, it's not, one that comes up all the time, but it needs to be there when it's, when it needs to be there, that it's consistent.
We got to make sure it's understandable to the residents, too, so.
Yeah. And they need to know it's just really for scheduling. So that's the primary purpose.
Yeah. Do you think, Michelle, I know you have so much spare time, but do you think, obviously Stephanie has already volunteered some corrections or some additions?
I can do a draft for you if you'd like. Just send it to us, we can get it done.
Okay. But, so I want to make sure that's something that's easy for you to do or can do, and.
I have people.
Okay, that's good.
I have some really great people. We can get that.
And if we could have that maybe to look at in?
In August.
August. We can probably do it in July.
We can do it in July. Oh, yeah, July.
We can do it in July.
All right. Sounds good.
Good task for a parks and rec department.
Yeah, we can get the parks and rec department to take care of it.
There you go. There you go.
Good discussion.
So the last one would be to discuss other council business. Councilor Pichotti, what would you like to discuss?
I'm good.
All right. You are good. Councilor Thibodeau?
I am good.
Awesome. Thank you. You are also good. We enjoy having you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lorette?
I do want to remind people, because I've seen this out on social media a lot, about the kids eat free this summer for MSAD 49. I know we, it was in the agenda about the Lawrence Public Library. Just as a reminder, that is June 17 through August 16, Monday through Friday. They are not going to be there for July 4th and 5th, though. And that, there's three different locations in Fairfield that anyone under 18 can go get some food. That's Lawrence Junior High Cafe, the Victor Grange, and Fairfield Public Library. There's been some confusion. They sent out a form this year for people to fill out, and a lot of folks thought, oh, if I didn't fill that out, I can't get anything for my child. That is not true. That is for bulk pickup. So if you did not sign up, that's okay. Go down there, pick up the food for the kiddo.
You get the times for each location, or?
Yeah. So the Lawrence Junior High Cafe is 10 to 12:30. Victor Grange is 10:45 to 11:15. And then the Fairfield Public Library is 11:30 to 12.
Nice. Thank you, Adam, for mentioning those.
Victor Grange is 10:45 to 11:15.
It's about half an hour there, yeah. It's nice, because this does serve, you know, Fairfield Center, serves the downtown, and then also across, so.
Just in case this person can't make it to these locations, they get alternate ones.
Yeah.
You're going to talk about Saturday. You're going to mention the Grange on Saturday?
Yes.
Go for it.
Is that all you have?
It's all I got. I don't want to steal Peter's thunder.
Councilor Lawrence?
Just don't forget Saturday is, the Grange is having their public supper from 4:30 to 6:00.
Baked beans.
Beans, hot dog, casseroles.
It's posted on the community website multiple times, so.
It's in the paper today, too.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. For myself, I had a few ones. So one is, I'll start with the, I'll finish with the high notes, so that'll be good. One question would be for, if, if there's been more discussion on working with Benton on the ambulance and where that stands. I think those are things that just keep on, we should need to keep on bringing up. And I know you can't talk about negotiations or anything along those lines, but has that been a issue that's been continuing to be worked on? I'm sure it has been.
So we are continuing to work on that. I actually spoke with one of Benton's selectmen yesterday, who happened to be at the KB Cog meeting, who is very much looking forward to us continuing to work through that process. And the fire chief and I actually have a meeting with Delta tomorrow morning on an update. So we're, we're working on continuing to plug forward.
I know you are, and I think it's just important the public knows that it's not forgotten.
No, not forgotten.
So thank you. Which kind of speaks to the next thing, which was the kind of the open house, open station for the Fairfield Fire Department and Benton Fire Department. That was actually a great, you know, chance to get together and meet some of the folks there, and have a chance to walk through the department. They did a great job for some of the, for the kids that were there. But it's a chance to talk to them and see what they have for equipment, and this, those chances to understand where they're coming from, and some of the challenges they face, and a great chance to walk around the, around the fire station. And so I think it was, I'm glad they put that on. I really appreciate them doing that, and that was a good event. I saw Adam there with his family, it was nice.
I walked in after I saw you and Adam, so.
Yeah, so that was good. I think it was, it was nice for them to, to be involved, and also it helps, does talk to what their, some of the restrictions or limitations they face. So. There was one thing that'll come up, and I'll just let you have a chance, Michelle, so I don't want to throw you on the bus. I usually want to talk to you ahead of time. But discussions about how rental fees work for the community center. It looks like it's pretty obvious when you look on the community site, those go on. But then I see things, talking about taking percentages of profits and like, on that for when people put on presentations. So let's just speak to that.
So the community center is not a giant moneymaker, doesn't offset all of its costs, but it does have revenue. And if you look under the revenue sheet that's in the town report, it does show where we receive revenue for the community center for various different things. The spaces are rented, whether it be for the conference room, the gymnasium, those sort of things. PAL programs, sports programs, we do not charge them a fee, so that when they use this facility, they use it for free. So the rental income is really for birthday parties or the occasional meeting. The wrestling folks, when they're in here, they rent it, or various different events, that kind of craft fairs, that sort of stuff. I'm not real sure about what the question is for fees.
It looks like it's pretty straightforward.
Our rental fees are on our website. It does say what our fees are for individuals and nonprofit organizations. There is a slightly different fee structure for for-profit organizations, and it actually is twice the amount of the recurrent rental fee for our nonprofits and individuals. So that if you were to say, rent this facility and charge folks to come in to take the class that you're doing, or that kind of stuff, and you are a for-profit organization, your fee structure is twice what the individual or nonprofit fees are. I think that might be where some of that question is coming from. Again, another document that's probably could be worded better. And then fee structures are different for particular events. So if you want the gym, and it's a full day, it's $250, $125 for half day. And then there's a fee for the kitchen. Obviously, we don't rent the kitchen at this time, so those, we don't collect those fees.
Soon.
And that's, I mean, unless you have something else.
Nope.
And then there's a deposit that is put down. And then the, typically, we get feedback. So this would be another piece with having parks and recreation would be really great for this building, is we have to come, we come down and pick up the key. So if you've ever rented this facility, you have to put the key in the slot, that's in one of the doors out here in the hallway. We come down, we pick up the key, we take a look to see if there's anything going on. If you rented the facility and left it a mess, somebody comes in behind you, they report to us that it was a mess when they got here, you will not get your security deposit back, because we had to, they had to come in and clean that, those sort of things. But it would be nice to know that there was somebody here helping to have oversight of this building and, and watch what's going on into it, as opposed to when staff have a chance to stop it. So, but that's, that's how it works.
Perk, Michelle, thank you for the clarification and just showing us what's there on the, on the policy, and just that you're following that. So I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
The last one, I just wanted to really actually congratulate folks on getting our grant to help start the process of improving the community center and our resiliency for our town. So the, I know it was something that Stephanie did and started the process, didn't get the grant the first time around, made some additions and changes. So that was definitely, you showed resiliency to stick with it and do that, which was great.
It was a team effort.
It was a team effort. So I think one of the things, so on, on that end, the, the building committee probably had some of this help because of looking at the, at the status of the building. KB Cog to help you write the grant. Michelle, for doing a lot of work.
So there wasn't any feedback from the, from the building committee that went into this? The, we got the feedback from the organization when we were not successful the last time. And the reason why we weren't successful is the educational component, that, that training that you need to do for the community was not in our grant application. It wasn't that we hadn't talked about it or thought about that process, but we did not, that detail got missed in our application, and that's why we weren't successful the first time around. So the second time around, we did put it in, and they've actually come back, they want even more detail on that, that we're going to finalize next week with KB Cog and get that taken care of. But yeah, that's exactly what's happened.
But the, the biggest person I really want to thank is Stephanie Thibodeau.
Oh, thank you.
Because I guess it takes, it takes, it takes a village, it takes a team to put something like that together. But it takes one person to stick to it and see it through. So you definitely did that. I know it's been something that you have been passionate about, and I appreciate your hard work, and the town should thank you for it. So I will thank you, I will thank you for the town.
Thank you.
Good work. Good job.
Thank you.
That's all, that's all I have to say. Okay?
Everyone have a good July 4th?
Everyone have a good July 4th. All right. So the next regular meeting, the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, July 10, 2024, to be held as a hybrid meeting in council chambers and via Zoom at 6:30 PM. Recession at this time.
Make a motion, recess. Second.